Twenty ninth meeting of the Cookeville City Council to order, can we have a roll call, please?
Councilman Woodford.
Present.
Councilman Henry. Mayor Shelton.
Here.
Vice Mayor Epps.
Here.
Councilman Womack.
Here.
Four present and one absent.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to invite those that wish to do so to stand for the invocation given tonight by Buddy Johnson, Jeff Stran Avenue Church of Christ, followed by the pledge of allegiance to the United States flag.
Let us pray. Dear Father in heaven, we thank you for this day. We thank you for the good men and women on our city council. We pray that you'll give them wisdom and insight as they make good decisions tonight. Lord, we thank you for the upper Cumberland and Putnam County in which we're blessed to live. We thank you for our families. We thank you for our freedom. We thank you for those who fight to serve and protect. In Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Buddy. Item three, consider approval of agenda as presented. Are there any changes or corrections?
Mayor, there are no changes to the agenda.
Thank you. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Motion is second. Any discussion? All vote?
Four yes votes, motion carries.
Item four A, recognition of wastewater treatment plant for receiving the Operational Excellence Award. Ronnie Kelly.
Mayor and council, I'd like to recognize, I've got a couple employees here tonight, Tom Graham and John Buford. They're the superintendent of the wastewater treatment facility and the assistant down there. And back in July, the Tennessee Water Professional Conference, this holds an annual conference every year, combination of Tennessee and Kentucky. And they were, our wastewater plant was awarded, an award at that location, at that facility. They were, received the Operational Excellence Award for the period of January 1st, 2015 through December 31st, 15. The award is continued, for continued outstanding operation for four consecutive years. This is conferred to recognize the dedication, resolve, and outstanding effort of the employees of the Cookeville Wastewater Treatment Facility by having no more than one violation of its permit limit for the 12-month reporting period. So I just wanted to recognize them and tell you they're doing an excellent job down there and deserve some recognition.
Thank you, ma'am. Congratulations. For B, consider appointment to the Alcoholics Beverage Control Board. Kathy McLean.
Thank you. We have one vacancy on the Alcoholics Beverage Control Board. That will be Ray Smith. He's going to be moving out of town, won't be in the city limits, so won't be qualified to serve on the board. We have talked to David Laramore, and he has agreed to serve on the board, and I recommend him being appointed.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion is second. Any discussion? All vote?
Four yes votes, motion carries.
Under old business, five A, consider approval of minutes of council meeting held on September 15th, 2016. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion is second. Any discussion? All vote?
Four yes votes, motion carries.
The consent agenda, six A, consider awarding bids for transformers for the electric department. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Motion is second. Any discussion? All vote?
Four yes votes, motion carries.
Under new business, seven A, hold a public hearing and consider on first reading ordinance O-160919 rezoning a portion of 803 Horace Lewis Road from RS-20 single-family residential and CI commercial industrial mixed-use to RS-5 single-family residential. Mr. Mills.
Mayor and council members, this is the location of the property that's being considered for rezoning. Here's a close review of the property. And this is a portion of the property located at 803 Horace Lewis Road. And the track, the portion of the tract that's being considered for rezoning actually fronts on Old Sparta Road. It's starting to track, extends on back into here. The rezoning request was initiated by Chad Gilbert, Putnam County Contracting Services, on behalf of the property owner, Bullington Land Company, LLC. The property is identified as a portion of parcel 18 on tax map 96, and the portion considered for rezoning is five acres. According to the records of the Putnam County Property Assessor, parcel 18 consists of 20 acres, a little over 20 acres in its entirety. As you can see on this map, the portion of the property being proposed for rezoning, the current zoning is split. There's about three and a half acres of this tract that's zoned as RS-20, and then the remainder is 1.5 acres, which is zoned as CI commercial industrial mixed-use. You can also see on this map that it's contiguous RS-20 zoned properties on three sides with CI to the west. Located to the north and south are, and east are single-family dwellings and a mobile home. And to the west is a welding establishment, which is located in here. And this is on the same tract that we're being considered, portion is being considered for rezoning. The RS-20 district's intended for, to provide for low-density residential development, primarily without wastewater services, has a minimum land area of 20,000 square feet. The CI district's intended to accommodate a mixture of compatible commercial and light industrial developments, and the residential uses are not allowed in the CI district. The requested RS-5 districts intended to provide a moderate-density, single-family residential development where public wastewater services are available. And within this district, you can go down to a minimum of 5,000 square feet per dwelling unit. And as you know, public wastewater services have recently been made available to this area and to this subject property. Our 2030 plan indicates that this property is best suited for single-family residential development. The property is located in an area that was annexed in 2000. Our plan also notes that to accommodate anticipated growth, significant portions of the areas annexed since 2000 will have to be rezoned to when the appropriate infrastructure is provided. And as I noted, sewer is now available here. In 2015, the planning commission approved, recommended, and the council approved rezoning a tract just south of this. Let me go back, it's this piece right here, to RS-5, which is currently being developed as a single-family subdivision. And that's the proposed plans in this case, is a single-family subdivision with smaller lots. The proposed rezoning's been recommended by the planning commission and is endorsed by the planning department.
Thank you. At this time, we'll open the public hearing portion of the meeting. Do we have anyone in the audience that would like to speak about this proposal? All right. Do we have a motion for this item?
So moved.
Second. We have a motion is second. Any questions or comments from the council?
Mr. Mayor, I have a question. James, compared, you told, you know, we talked about this in the work session, and one of the questions that I did not ask, I failed to, sorry about that, but, you know, going from RS-20 to RS-5, what's the difference in the number of homes for that?
Well, at RS-20, it's 20,000 square feet per acre, so that looks, it's 20,000 square feet per dwelling unit, which works out to about two per acre. The RS-5 works out to about eight per acre.
Okay.
5,000 square foot lots.
Eight per acre, okay. And another thing too, which I failed to remember, is that we, you, the planning commission and the city council has approved, and there's just RS-5, this catty corner.
Yeah, you can just see the corner right here. We anticipate this happening quite frequently in these areas where we extend sewer, and it's only logical, when you get sewer, then you can't increase density. RS-20, or 20,000 square feet is the minimum lot you have to have when you use septic systems, when sewer's not available. And that's why you see most of these at 20,000. You know, we've recognized the need for additional housing. Also, more affordable housing is a need, and the smaller lots allows a developer to provide that. When you have a whole lot of your upfront cost in land, and generally, the homes are a higher value, and we've got a lot of those, we do need the moderate and lower-priced homes in the city.
Okay. Thank you, James.
Any other comments or questions? All right, well, close the public hearing now, and we'll vote. All vote.
Four yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you. For, or seven B, hold a public hearing, consider on first reading ordinance O-160920, amendments to the zoning code relating to medical clinics, ambulance service, taxi service, multifamily dwellings, control of natural drainage systems, and storm water management. Mr. Mills.
Mayor and council members, as we talked about at work session, this is mostly can be considered a housekeeping ordinance. Over, what I try to do is, as we've become aware of needed changes, I try to hold those and just put them all together in one ordinance instead of having an ordinance here every month, especially those that aren't really pressing. And so we've come to the point where we do need to make several changes to the zoning code. The first change would happen in section 204 of the zoning code, specifically our current requirements for drainage and storm water management. And basically what this change does, it removes our current standards that are specified in the zoning code to reference directly to the municipal code. As you know, we have made some changes to our storm water requirements, and we're getting ready to make some additional changes. So instead of us having to go every time we change our storm water regulations, go back and change the zoning code after that, this will just let, once you make a change to the municipal code, it's automatically reflected in the zoning code. The second change has to do with clarifying how we calculate off-street parking requirements for multifamily uses. Currently, the code provides that for the first 50 units in a multifamily development, the requirement is 1.25 spaces per bedroom, and then for every unit over that, it drops down to two per dwelling unit. Now, if you have a mixed development that has a mixture, you have a multifamily development that has a mixture of dwelling units in terms of number of bedrooms, for example, one portion was two bedrooms, one's three, one's four, if you calculate the two and three bedrooms first, you could end up with a severe shortage in parking. So what this requires is that when we do have developments with a varying number of bedrooms per dwelling unit, the ones with the highest bedrooms will be calculated first. And we believe this will protect us from having shortages in parking. The next amendment specifies that multifamily dwelling units can have no more than one kitchen or cooking facility per unit. This is requested by the codes department, and what this is intended to address is where, and we've had several of these multifamily developments that have three or four bedrooms, and then in some cases, they've gone in and put kitchen facilities in there, and it creates a codes issue in terms, we don't, in terms of safety, but it also increases density. Those become individual dwelling units. So that's why that requirement's in there. The next changes have to do with uses. The codes department, because of demand, has requested that we amend the code to allow medical clinics within the CL district. And the same thing applies to the taxi services, that's requested by the city clerk, based on demand, I believe that we need to expand where those uses can go. And the last amendment revises the standards in the permitted uses in the CI commercial industrial mixed-use zoning district to indicate that medical clinics and ambulance service, including air ambulance service, are permitted uses in that district. And this is basically driven by, it's anticipated that, or it's been discussed, that the Cookeville Regional Medical Center may want to open some type of medical clinic with a business park, and this would allow that to occur. These movements have been approved by the planning commission and are recommended by the planning department.
Thank you. Again, at this time, we'll open the public hearing portion. Do we have anyone in the audience that would like to speak about these matters? All right, do we have a motion?
So moved.
Motion is second. Any discussion or comments among the council?
I have one, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mills, one of the things on the, we're doing on the code, particularly the storm water management and natural drainage, a piece of property on Willow that Highlands Residential that has been sold and is going to be redeveloped. Where that was built 50 years ago, it didn't address water retention. In the future, when that is redeveloped, whoever develops it is going to have to have a plan for water retention, not to contribute to the flooding on Willow. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. And the changes are, they're coming in when, Mike?
October 20th.
October, at your October 20th meeting will be some, several amendments to our storm water regulations, and that's, will automatically become a part of the zoning code with this change. But those changes are significant, and we think will greatly enhance and help improve the storm water issue across the city. And Mike and Greg can both testify, we get a lot of complaints and concerns, and in our survey, that was one of the highest issues about storm water. And a couple of changes are, we're reducing the, proposing to reduce, and recommending to you to reduce the square footage of impervious service that you can have before the storm water regulations kick in. We hope that helps, especially on smaller developments, in a cumulative fashion, add to the storm water problem. And then, just like you talked about, we're proposing that, and another good example is the, what I always refer to as the Rose's Shopping Center. Now, that's all asphalt and building. At some point in time, that will be redeveloped. In our current regulations, we can't, we couldn't require storm water. With the proposed changes, we will be able to, and that would have a significant impact on Willow, if we can get some retention on that side and others as they're redeveloped.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, we'll close the public hearing. Now vote.
Four yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you. Seven C, consider resolution R-160915 authorizing the participation in the TML Risk Management Pool Safety Partners Loss Control Matching Grant Program. Gail Fowler.
Mayor and council, this resolution is requested to authorize the city of Cookeville to participate in the municipal league's Risk Management Pool Safety Partners Loss Control Matching Grant Program. The grant is submitted to provide funding for 10 refurbished laptop computers for employee online training. The pool now offers a program of online training classes. It's called the Local Government Risk Academy, and it meets many of our annual training requirements. Several of our employees work off-site and don't have access to offices or computers, so this grant will enable a laptop to be provided to each facility for those employees to utilize the online training at a time that is convenient to department schedules. The training can be tracked by the pool and will hopefully offset some premium cost in future. It could also provide additional defense in some instances of litigation where training documentation is needed. The resolution authorizes a matching sum of $2,499.50. I'm happy to try and answer any questions you might have, but would respectfully request your approval.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion is second. Any discussion? All vote?
Four yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you. Seven D, consider resolution R-160916 authorizing the participation in the James L. Richardson Driver Safety Matching Grant Program. Gail Fowler.
Mayor and council, this resolution is requested to authorize the city to participate. I don't know where they come up with these names, but the James L. Richardson Driver Safety Matching Grant Program, it's a mouthful. The grant will provide money for the city's safety coordinator to become certified as a defensive driving instructor through the National Safety Council. Will also purchase the necessary materials needed to train employees and pay all related travel expenses. The endeavor is recommended by the pool for in-house instructor-led training. Our accident review board can utilize this training for remedial driver school training that is sometimes recommended for frequent preventable vehicle-related accidents. Unfortunately, we do have those. It would also be beneficial for the police department, they have a separate accident review board. I think it could also be beneficial for fire and utility departments, and it could also be offered to neighboring municipalities if that was desired. The resolution authorizes a matching sum of $1,089.50. Once again, I'm happy to try and answer any questions you might have, but would respectfully request your approval.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion is second. Any discussion?
Who's James Richardson?
I don't know, I should have looked that up.
Is he a good driver or a bad driver?
I'm not sure.
He's defensive.
I'm going to check that though, and let you know.
All vote, all vote.
Four yes votes, motion carries.
Seven E, consider resolution R-160917 authorizing the city of Cookeville to provide routine maintenance for the historic Buck Cemetery as provided by TCA 46-2-107. Mike Davidson.
Mayor, I think Councilman Womack would like to read the resolution.
Sure, absolutely.
Read the resolution, because we've been working on this.
Yes, sir.
For way over a year, year and a half, to get this done. Whereas the Buck Cemetery was designated an historical cemetery by the Tennessee Preservation Trust in August of 2016, and whereas the historic Buck Cemetery is located on attractive land at 720 West 9th Street and consists of approximately 1.25 acre portion of a 4.5 acre tract owned by the heirs of F.M. Buck. Whereas occasionally, various volunteers and groups have worked to clear and maintain the cemetery grounds, but over time, the historic Buck Cemetery has been abandoned and is not maintained on a routine, ongoing basis. And whereas the city of Cookeville was approached by a community group of concerned citizens with interest in preserving, protecting, and properly maintaining the Buck Cemetery. And whereas pursuant to majority vote of the Cookeville City Council, TCA 46-2-107 allows local governments to draw upon the general fund for the purpose of rehabilitating or maintaining dilapidated or abandoned cemeteries or portions of cemeteries. Now therefore, be it resolved that the city council of the city of Cookeville, Tennessee, hereby directs that the city of Cookeville will provide routine maintenance at reasonable intervals to include improving the premises by mowing and trimming the correctly identified and cleared cemetery area to preserve the heritage of this abandoned but historically significant Buck Cemetery until such time as an organization is formed to properly care for the cemetery. Be it further resolved that the city of Cookeville does not accept ownership or operation of the property as a cemetery, and will not clear or remove trees outside the cemetery area. And I'll make that as a motion, Mayor.
Yes, sir. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion, a second. Any discussion? All vote?
Four yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you. Seven F, consider resolution R-160918 authorizing the electric department to adjust its retail rates to ensure the pass-through of the TVA wholesale rate increase. Mr. Peak.
Mayor and council, as we discussed at the work session on Monday, at its August 2016 board meeting, as part of the budget process, TVA approved a 1.5% wholesale rate increase. And basically, what that would mean to our average residential customers, about a dollar and a half to $2 a month. The TVA indicated that the increase was due to costs associated with the second reactor at Watts Bar, and they mentioned some other things about doing more green-type projects, some of the money will be spent for that. And CED will not be adding any kind of an increase to this, and this will amount to about $675,000 additional power costs to Cookeville, and we'd request authorization from the council to pass that along to our customers. I'd recommend your approval.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion is second. Any discussion? This is one of those unfortunate, no choice really. You know, that's a large amount of money for our department to absorb. Certainly, we make it known that this isn't our increase, it is a pass-through of a increase mandated to us.
That is correct.
Yes, sir. All right. All vote.
Four yes votes, motion carries.
Seven G, consider approval of TDOT agreement, amendment number five of the Tennessee Central Heritage Rail Trail Grant Contract, extending the grant period for one year to November 1, 2017. Lynda Kiefer.
Evening, Mayor and council. As we get closer to completing phase one of the Tennessee Central Heritage Rail Trail, which is being used almost daily, even though it's not open, a few kind of housekeeping points we need to take care of. Part of the Transportation Enhancement Grant had a November 1, 2016 end date, and so we will need to extend that contract for one year in order to allow for final invoices to come through. Also, to allow for an establishment period that was in our construction contract for the shrubs, that are the soft barriers, to have a growing period of where they can be substantially, you know, grown from April to November, and that would be November 2017. So we're asking for a 12-month extension, requires a signature, all good, and the county will be passing this as well.
Very good. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion is second. Any discussion?
One thing, I just attended a meeting where one of the manufacturers, industries out on Fisk Road said that they had constructed a little trail for their employees to use to get to the rail trail in order so at lunchtime, they can walk up and down the trail, and one person in the business there is riding their bike to work along the rail trail already, so that people are already using it right now.
That's right, they are. That's great, that's great news. I think it's been a long time coming, but I think citizens are really gonna, going to enjoy this.
Anything else? All vote?
Four yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you.
Seven H, consider approval of TDOT agreement for the Interstate Drive and South Jefferson Avenue Sidewalk Project. Mike Davidson.
Mayor and council members, the city received 2014 and 2015 allocations from the state or Surface Transportation Program funding. These funds have certain restrictions on the type streets or improvements you can make with these, with these funds. What we proposed is sidewalk project along Interstate Drive and a portion of South Jefferson between Interstate Drive and South Walnut. It's roughly 8,500 feet of sidewalk that we're proposing to install with this money. It's approximately a $730,000 project. The city would match roughly $146,000 of this, but I would ask your approval of this contract for this project.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion is second. Discussion?
Just want to, Mr. Mayor, just want to say, this is one of those projects that is very exciting, given Cookeville's growth and people being pedestrians and bikers, and we no longer need to have, we don't, we've got to the point, we don't need to see people walking on the street. We see them walking on sidewalks. And I truly appreciate everything that was done in order to get this project through, and looking forward to it coming to fruition.
I agree. This is, it's pretty shocking, really, that this main thoroughfare didn't have a sidewalk.
Absolutely.
So it's good, and we definitely don't want streetwalkers, and so that's.
Not in that area.
Not at all. So we have a motion and a second. All vote?
Four yes votes, motion carries.
Seven I, consider approval of TDOT Signal Maintenance Agreement for traffic signals on State Route 111 at I-40 interchange. Greg Brown.
Mayor and council, TDOT recently approved the installation of signals on the on and off ramps, or the off ramps at 111 and I-40. It's presently in the design phase, and this agreement just obligates the city to maintain the signals like we do all the rest of the signals in town, once they get those installed. I request your approval.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion is second. Any discussion?
Greg, just a question, have you had many comments, or I don't know if the public knows about this very much, about this light coming up at this intersection? I think it's a welcome addition, it's a terrible place for accidents, et cetera. But have you had many comments at all from the public?
We've had several requests for a signal to be installed there over the last several years.
But note, you haven't had any negative comments about requests either.
No, not at all.
Very good.
It's a tremendously needed and very popular item that has been, the only unfortunate part is it's going to take so long to get it. It's probably still another two years away.
Probably so, yes.
So, any other comments? All vote?
Four yes votes, motion carries.
Seven J, consider approval of TDOT Maintenance Proposal for the South Jefferson Avenue Widening Project. Greg Brown.
Mayor and council, this is a proposal that would obligate the city to maintain parts of the South Jefferson Widening Project after it's completed. This is from basically I-40 to 111. The proposal is to widen it to five lanes, and it's basically the same agreement we have for all other state highways in Cookeville. The state maintains inside the curbs, and we will maintain everything outside the curbs, except we're not obligated for mowing. The state will still be obligated to do the mowing, but we'll maintain any storm water structures or sidewalks. I request your approval.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion is second. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, just another, thank you, Mr. Mayor, just another project that needs to be, that needs to be done, and should have came yesterday, but unfortunately, it's going to, it's going to take a while, and I think, guarantee you, one of the things that'll happen when it gets done, we'll have some sidewalks out there for it.
Just sidewalks are included in this project.
Amen. Any other comments? All vote?
Four yes votes, motion carries.
Seven K, consider approval of changes to the 2017 health insurance plan. Simmel.
Mayor and council, our employee health insurance plan has been self-funded since 1998. The premiums paid by the city, the employees, and the retirees cover all the plan expenses. Blue Cross Blue Shield administers our plan, and we carry stop-loss coverage to protect against catastrophic claims. The current PPO plan is a medical dental plan with two employee premium tiers. Our employees either select single or family coverage, it has a $1,000 deductible, and a $2,500 out-of-pocket, $5,000 out-of-pocket for family. And the current monthly premiums that our employees are paying is $55 for single coverage And the current monthly premiums that our employees are paying is $55 for single coverage and $264 for family coverage. This slide shows you our claims history for the last 13 years since 2004, and claims have increased 151% during that time period. We ended fiscal year 16 with $4.4 million in claims, and Blue Cross Blue Shield is projecting for fiscal year 17, $4.7 million in claims. And the flip side of that is this is the fund balance of the plan, and you can see it went down. We went from a high of almost $4.7 million back in fiscal year 2008, where we ended 2016 at $2.8 million. In the last four years, we've decreased fund balance 1.2 million. And this slide shows you a history of our premiums that we've used for the health insurance since 2002, and you can see we increased premiums there on the bottom in 2003. The employee was paying $40 for single coverage, and the city was paying $276 of that, and the employee was paying $197 for family coverage, and the city was paying $670, $27 of that. And we had a very nice, we were blessed to have about 11 years where we didn't have to increase premiums. But from the previous slides where you've seen what happened to claims, the last couple of years, we've had to increase some premiums and tweak some of the plan design. So that's where we are today. And last year, when you guys approved the 2016 premiums, you tasked us with bringing back something different for 2017. So with the guidance of our broker, BBNT, and the Health and Wellness Committee, has met numerous times over the last few months and reviewed various different options. So the 2017 plan recommendations that we're bringing you this evening does a couple of things. It offers employees more choices, it adds an additional premium tier of employee plus one dependent, and that dependent can be a spouse or a child. It adds an HSA-compatible, high deductible health plan, and it provides a participating incentive, wellness incentive, for those that want to participate in the city's wellness fair. And employees can choose between medical, dental, and vision separately. We've unbundled those to allow more choice. So the medical plan design, the employees can choose from two options. They can choose a basic PPO plan that has a $1,000 deductible and a $2,500 out-of-pocket cost, similar to what we've got today, or they can choose a high deductible plan with a $2,700 deductible and a $5,000 out-of-pocket. Whether they take either one of those plans, the preventive wellness exams, screenings, and immunizations are still covered 100% within network providers. Both of those are with Blue Cross Blue Shield Network S, and the high deductible plan is an HSA-compatible, which means an employee that elects that plan can create a health savings account, and they can set money aside pre-tax and use for qualified medical expenses, and those are determined, defined by the IRS, I guess I should say. And we're also offering a voluntary wellness participation incentive for the employee-only, whichever plan they choose. And this slide's a lot of numbers, but these are, this is a layout of the medical premiums, and because there are so many options, that's why you've got so many numbers. But you've got a column for employee only, and the new tier, employee plus one, and family. And if they stick in the, the numbers at the top are the new premiums with the wellness incentive. So if they, if the employee goes through the wellness fair and satisfies the participation requirements, they can get a discount. So the premiums for the first plan would be $70 for employee only, $197 for employee plus one, and $247 for family, if they choose the PPO plan. The city's going to put in the same amount in either option, so for employee only, the city will be providing $372, for employee plus one, $695, and for the city, for family coverage, the city will be paying $1,049. The elective dental benefits will still be with Blue Cross Blue Shield, we're just unbundling them from the medical premiums that they're currently paying, and we're adding that third tier of employee plus one. So the premiums for dental will be zero for the employee for single coverage, the city will pay 100% of that, and for employee plus one and family, we're splitting 50/50 with the employee. Now, new for 2017 is a vision, a separate new vision benefit. It's unbundled, the current medical plan has a vision rider that allows them just one exam per year, so we're unbundling that and giving them a new vision policy that has additional benefits. And if the employee elects to take this coverage, they'll pay the premiums for it, and you can see there at $6.66 for employee coverage, $1,332 for employee plus one, and $2,131 for family coverage. And the additional benefits, this will cover an annual exam, lenses, frames, and contact lenses, which it are currently not getting, so. Now, having said all that, you'll say, what does this mean to our employees? So this slide kind of shows you the effect on our employees. The top there is the current plan, you can see it's a medical plan with the $100 vision rider, and it's with Blue Cross Blue Shield Network S, and the dental there with Blue Cross Blue Shield, and that's all together with one premium. The employee is currently paying $55, and we currently don't have an employee plus one, so they're paying the same premium as the family at $264, okay? And that's monthly premiums, I should say. Now, if you look down to the new plan, here's the medical plan, and it's the same benefits as above, except for there's no vision rider. And you can see the premiums for that, if the employee selects that and they want to stay with the $1,000 deductible, $2,500 PPO, it's going to be $70 for employee only, $197 for employee plus one, and $247 for family coverage. And then the dental is now elected, but it's the same benefits as above, and if they choose the dental, as I went through the premiums in the previous slide, for employee only, it's zero, the city will pay 100%, and for employee plus one and family, we're splitting 50/50, so that's the premiums there that the employee will pay. And then the new elective or vision coverage here on the bottom, we're getting rid of that vision rider and offering them a new expanded benefit vision plan. If they choose that, the employee pays 100% of it, and you can see it'd be $6.66 for employee only, $1,332 for employee plus one, and $2,131. And then beside that, I have, if they choose the high deductible plan, and they take on a $2,700 deductible and a $5,000 out-of-pocket, you can see here's the premiums and how they break down for that. For medical, the city pays 100% of it. For the dental, the city pays 100% of single coverage and 50%, they're paying 50% of the rest, the employee plus one and the family coverage. And for vision, the employee pays all of it. So to do a comparison, in employee-only coverage today, they're paying $55 a month. If they want to keep all the same elective coverages in the medical today and keep the $1,000 deductible, they're going to be paying $76.66 a month. That's an increase of $21.66 a month. But if they decide they want to take on a little bit more risk or responsibility for their claims, they can choose the high deductible, and they're going to be paying $6.66 a month, and they're going to save $48.34 a month. So this design kind of gives employees choices. Instead of a one-size-fits-all, they can evaluate where their family is and what the needs are of their family, and they can pick and choose which works best for their family. And that's all I have, I'll be happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion, a second. Any discussion?
Brenda and Gail and the Health and Wellness Committee and BBT, I appreciate all the hard work that you put in this. Healthcare is a very critical and an expensive situation we all have to live with. To give the employees some choices, you've given them a menu of healthcare, and I see potentially the younger employees, somebody 25, 30, using the higher deductible, so they would be up, you know, not as much per month, because typically, they're the more healthy of us, and the ones that get older, you have some choices for them. But you have done, I can tell, and from the charts, you have put a lot of effort in the committee, and BBT have, and also BBT is going to be able to sit down and talk to employees individually to go over, so they're fully aware of what they are getting and take advantage of what is best for them as an individual.
Yeah, and let me say too, that we do open enrollment every year, so if somebody picks a plan for 2017, they're only locked into it for a year, so next year at open enrollment, they can change. If they try the high deductible for a plan this year, and it didn't work out, they can switch back to the PPO next year.
So it gives them flexibility.
It gives them flexibility, that's correct. And with the high deductible, I'd mentioned in the earlier slide, they're eligible to create a health savings account, and that's where the, and what part of the education process is, we'd like to see what they're paying in premiums now, for them to do payroll deduction and put that right into their health savings accounts. It's pre-tax dollars, and it's always their money, it stays in their own account, and they can use that money for, as the IRS defined, qualified tax, qualified medical, you know, expenses, so. And then if they leave the city for whatever reason, that money goes with them.
Mr. Mayor, yes. Actually, Brenda, I was going to just, you didn't mention it earlier in your, in your presentation, but yes, that HSA, especially for those younger employees that aren't going to have a whole lot of costs right there for them and their family right now, that HSA, that money, those monies for, goes, can go to anything that's qualified under the medical plan.
Yes.
It's pre-tax dollars, and it stays with them forever. They can, they can keep that until they're 65 and then use it to buy long-term health insurance.
Right, that's correct. And...
It's, it gives wonderful options for people that, that, that feel like it, especially, especially our younger employees, and that, that's something that's, it's not been done a lot, and especially hasn't been done in the city. It's been done out there for a while, but it takes a little bit of thought and education to do that, and I hope we have, hope the Wellness Committee, Health and Wellness Committee has the opportunity to spend the time to help educate our employees about that plan. Wonderful.
And even if they change, like they do the high deductible this year, and they put money in the health savings account, and they switch back to the PPO next year, that money is still in their health savings account, and they can still use it for qualified medical expenses.
I would just say, thank you. We did challenge you last year to, you know, to come up with some options, because the one fact is that, that this is changing at every company in America, and the city is a business, and we have to treat it like that, and, but I think you came up with something that's very fair and it's very equitable, and also, you know, anytime you can get employees buying in and being a part of the process, it, not only does it educate them, but it makes them more accountable, and it makes, I think, end up with a better product, and so I think that's really good. So appreciate that, appreciate you and Gail and Mike and the, and the committee that, that worked on that diligently. So any other comments?
All vote?
Four yes votes, motion carries.
Seven A, consider approval of the 2016 Wellness Screening Program Agreement. Gail Fowler.
Mayor and council, I'm pleased to bring for your consideration this evening the 2016 Wellness Screening Program Agreement between the city of Cookeville and Cookeville Regional Medical Center. The program will be offered on Tuesday and Wednesday, October 25th and 26th, from 7:00 a.m. until 10:00 a.m. Location will be at the Water Quality Control Department on South Jefferson Avenue, and we thank Mr. Kelly for hosting us once again this year. We have reserved the 27th if necessary in anticipation for some increased participation. We do have a makeup day scheduled for Tuesday, November 1st, from 7:00 to 9:00 at City Hall. The services being offered and included in the contract cost are shown on the screen. I'm not going to read through those, they're there for you to review. There's an additional page of services that are available upon request, those would be at the employer, spouse, or retirees on expense. And for, per your approval of the previous item, changes to the health insurance plan, employees will also be made aware that participation in two of the five basic wellness services will result in a premium reduction of $37.20 per month. We're meeting with the department representatives in the morning to begin to distribute the registration forms and get this information out to employees. Based on the number of employees that are currently on our health insurance plan, if every employee that's on our plan participated, we could see an increase in about 100 participants in the wellness fair, so that's why we went ahead and scheduled that extra day in case we need that. So this program does continue to be very popular with our employees, retirees, and spouses. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have, and respectfully request your approval of the agreement.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion, a second. Any discussion or comment? All vote?
Four yes votes, motion carries.
Seven M, consider authorizing the city manager to enter into an engineering contract to evaluate solids handling and influent screening alternatives at our wastewater treatment plant, Ronnie Kelly.
Mayor and council, here seeking authorization for the city manager to enter into an engineering contract with CTI Engineer Incorporated to evaluate solids handling and influence screening alternatives at our wastewater treatment plant. CTI will develop and evaluate up to four feasible Class A bio solids treatment alternatives, including our current, current treatment process that we're using. They'll also develop and evaluate two dewatering alternatives in addition to the current dewatering method. A preliminary capital cost assessment will be developed, life cycle cost estimates for the alternatives will be developed, they will be ranked, and an overall recommendation will be put in a, in a report for our review and analysis. We've negotiated a price hourly, set hourly rate and broken down of not to exceed $27,500. And what we're looking, I'm going to get this, I got three or four slides. This is the influent of our wastewater treatment plant, so as wastewater comes in, there are screening units and so forth, all that's 20-plus years old, technology's changed. We want to look at new technology and what's happening there, to how we can improve that. After it gets through the process, it's into another belt press, these are 20-plus years old, I think 89 when we built the building. Different processes out there, more efficient, may be the best way to do it, but we want to look at those alternatives. Our Class A pasteurization, basically we turn the solids, the bio solids into a Class A, we pasteurize it, and it's deregulated at that point. That's the facility, you see this whole process here, and so it's a great process. We'd like to, we think we'd like to modify it, but there's other processes out there we'd like to evaluate and sort of look at and see, do we need to change or not? And then at the end of it, this is what you, this is the end product we have at the end, is the bio solids, and that's the product, farmers come, pick it up, and use it, and recycle it. So I would recommend your approval.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion, a second. Any discussion? All vote?
Four yes votes, motion carries.
That concludes our agenda portion of the meeting. This time we'll have time, if anyone would like to address the council on non-agenda items. Do we have anyone in the audience that would like to do that? No? My fellow council members, do you have anything tonight? All right. We have fall break coming up in the next two weeks for school-aged children, so if anyone's traveling, please be safe, and have a great weekend. We will be adjourned.